I now open the regular city council meeting of the Lubbock City Council for October the 8th, 2024. It is 12:33 PM and the city council will now conduct a work session and hear an update from the Friendship Independent School District, and I will call the city manager to introduce our guests from Friendship ISD who we probably already all know and will be providing the update.
Thank you, Mayor Protim, City Council, welcome. As was stated, today we do have our representatives here from Friendship Independent School District. I believe Dr. Michelle McCord, the superintendent, is going to take us through the presentation.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So, thank y'all so much for... Is this on? So, uh... Okay, good. All right. Thank y'all all for having us here today and for all the things you do every day for the citizens of Lubbock and the surrounding areas. So, November 5th is a big day, big election day, and Friendship will have three propositions on the ballot. And I want to take you through some of that, and it will include a video that has a lot of the pertinent information. So, three propositions. The first one, Proposition A, that would impact our maintenance and operations tax rate, and it's called a voter-approved tax ratification election. And then propositions B and C would impact the interest in sinking tax rate. But with that, I'm gonna...
Friendship ISD is designated as one of the fastest-growing school districts in Texas, where 1,400 staff serve more than 11,700 students across 16 campuses in the Wolfherth and Lubbock communities. A lot has changed over the last 89 years, but what hasn't changed is our commitment to excellence. In 2024, our community voted Friendship the number-one best school district and number-one best place to teach in the Lubbock area, according to NISH. So, it's no surprise, families are moving to Friendship. Each year, we're seeing a 2% to 5% increase in student enrollment, and by 2030, Friendship is expected to serve more than 15,000 students. Just over the next five years, demographers predict we will welcome more than 1,000 new elementary-age students through our doors. Growth in housing means more students, the need for more schools, more teachers, more police officers, and more money to maintain and operate our growing number of campuses. It's just like we've experienced in the opening of Alcove Trails Middle School and Ridgewood Elementary, and of course, we can't forget about Friendship Memorial High School that will open in August of 2025. To address these challenges, Friendship voters will see three propositions on the November 5th ballot. Proposition A is for teacher pay. It's a voter-approved tax ratification election. You may hear it called a VATRE, or a VATRE. Our school tax rate consists of two separate tax rates that we think of as two separate buckets of money. Maintenance and operations, or M&amp;O, that's how we pay our staff, keep the lights on, pay for instructional materials, student programs, police officers, insurance, and all the other day-to-day expenses like you have at your home. The interest-in-sinking bucket of money, or INS, also known as debt service, is how we build new schools, do major renovations and upgrades to our existing facilities, and purchase land as we continue to grow. It's how we pay for the bonds that are approved by voters. These two tax rates, or buckets of money, comprise our total tax rate, but we can't move money between the buckets. In order to increase the tax rate of either of the buckets, you, our voters, have to decide. Proposition A is proposing to increase our M&amp;O by 8 cents to $7,5670, but we're also decreasing the INS tax rate by 8 cents for a slightly lower overall tax rate of $1,15670 for the 2024-2025 school year compared to the 2023-2024 tax rate. How would that 8 cents impact our bottom line? It would bring in an additional $5.3 million in local revenue and $3.9 million in additional state aid that would go into our M&amp;O bucket. That would allow Friendship to provide a salary increase for our teachers and staff this school year, hire new teachers, staff, and police officers as the district adds new campuses, fund and expand student programs, improve campus security, and maintain class sizes. And even with lowering the INS tax rate bucket by 8 cents, Friendship still has the bond capacity to propose Proposition B and C. If passed, Proposition B for $189.5 million would fund the construction of two new elementary schools to accommodate our growing student population, infrastructure improvements to campus safety and security, various renovations for existing campuses, and address the growing transportation needs as we welcome more students. Proposition C is a technology bond for $10 million. If approved, the funds would purchase additional instructional technology devices like laptops and tablets to maintain one-to-one for our students and staff. That's a device in the hands of every teacher and every student. It would also replace older devices, and this bond would be repaid within five years. Even with the three propositions, Friendship's total tax rate of $1,15670 would be the lowest tax rate since 1993, 26 cents lower than the last time our voters approved a bond. As the landscape of our district continues to change and we welcome more students through our doors, our commitment remains the same as it did back in 1935, as we strive to seek perfection and capture excellence for every child. To learn more about Friendship ISD's three propositions, head over to our website at www.friendship.net.
Okay. Wonderful. Yes, yeah, so I have a couple more slides. That pretty much gives you the gist of everything, but I thought you guys might be interested in this slide as well. So, we have a demographer that helps us. We engage with him about every other year, and they give us a 10-year outlook. And what you see on the screen, those aren't student numbers, those are the projected occupied houses or housing units. So, you can see there are different types of housing units there. So, it includes an apartment unit, it could include a trailer, something like that, but about 80% of our students live in single-family homes. And then what you see on the, well, my left, it would be, that is a map of our attendance boundary. So, those aren't campus attendance boundaries, but a map of the district. And so, our eastern boundary is Frankfurt. And then if you, as you go a little bit further west, then we go further south. And so, at Upland, we go as far south as Highway 41. And then, but this is kind of like a heat map. So, and then our western boundary, in parts, we go to Hawkley County. So, we serve some parts of Hawkley County. But the colors demonstrate, the darker, darker the color, the more growth in that area. So, it's not a surprise for anyone here that we have seen growth and will continue to see growth in the, to the south. But we haven't seen as much growth in previous years as we are projecting in upcoming years. So, you can see that in the northeast part of the district, that's where we have Legacy Elementary that's just a little bit north of Erskine and along Milwaukee Avenue. And then you can see kind of, it's not really central, but a lot of that dark red around 19th Street. And then, one of the things that's surprising to us is that in the far west and north, that's actually Hawkley County, and it's west and north of the Reese Center, and we just have not seen growth there in the past. Then you can see, I haven't really included any elementary, pardon me, I only included elementary numbers here, enrollment numbers, because with the addition of Alcove Trails that opened last year, that's our fourth middle school, we're good for the next nine or 10 years for middle schools. And then if we can get that Memorial High School opened in August, then we're gonna be good for many years to come for high school students. But if we don't do anything with elementaries, then we have two campuses in particular that are going to be over capacity over this time period. So, you can see that top row, that's the name of the elementary, and then by column, it shows you what their, the 2024 number is actually, that date has passed, that was an actual enrollment number the last day of August of 2024. And many of you came to the Ridgewood ribbon-cutting, but even with opening Ridgewood, you can see that Upland Heights is going to outgrow its capacity by 2033, and that's with, we took out about 350 kids and rezoned this past year with Ridgewood. And then Willow Bend, which for us is located at 11th Street and FM 179, it's gonna be, have 1,526 kids if we don't have any additional elementary schools. And then the financial challenges, you don't need me to read these things to you, but all of the things that you see on this slide are financial challenges for our maintenance and operations tax rate. So, our maintenance and operations tax rate pays for absolutely everything except our debt. That is the interest-in-sinking tax rate. But everything you see on here is related, it is pressure on the M&amp;O tax rate. And I listed inflation since 2019, because that's the last time the legislature increased our basic allotment. So, we get $6,160 per student in Friendship who has perfect attendance. So, if you don't have perfect attendance, then that number decreases each day that you don't come to school. And then we have, you know, all the things that are just in your personal budgets, there's just pressure. Go to any, just try to get a hamburger, and it's just a pocketful of money. And then what you see in the blue side of the screen is, that is what it costs us to run each campus. So, everything except for the debt, so all the salaries, the, you know, to mow the lawn, all the things. So, last year, we had eight elementaries. This year, we opened another one. So, that added over $4 million to our M&amp;O bottom-line middle schools. We used to have three, now we have four, and so that's about $5 million a year. High school, oh my goodness, that's about 13 million a year. That does include our ninth-grade center, and so that number will decrease a little bit once we open Memorial, but then, of course, we'll add Memorial to the cost. And then safety and security, I mean, there's not anything more important, as y'all well know, than we provide a safe and secure environment for our kids, whether it's physical safety, psychological safety. And that cost for us is $2.6 million a year, and we still have that campus coming on next year. And our allotment, so we do receive funding from the state, and we receive a little less than $300,000 a year. And the cost that we incur, I would say that Friendship does go a little bit above and beyond, but mostly, these are requirements. And so, that's, every school district is dealing with those costs. Why VATRE? Well, we already talked about that. We're asking for an 8-cent increase for all the reasons that are listed there. And then we're back to the bucket math. You can see our M&amp;O tax rate in the 2023-2024 school year, the interest-in-sinking rate for a total tax rate of about $1.16. Then for this year, we're asking for an 8-cent increase in Proposition A for the maintenance and operations tax rate. But we're actually, we decreased our interest-in-sinking tax rate by 8 pennies, and we can still afford to, if approved, borrow money for the, the two elementary schools and other things we talked about. And the tax rate is a little bit lower, but it's still about $1.16. You can see, these are the, this screen is related to Proposition B and Proposition C. You heard about all of that on the, on the video. And then the ballot language, now I have to confess, this is not completely accurate. We're supposed to have this in all caps, and I didn't put it in all caps. And then also, there's not gonna be any red ink on there either. It's a, for propositions B and C, the last sentence says it's a property tax increase. And so, I don't want to interpret that for you at all, but I will call your attention to this, the tax rate for 2024-2025 is $1,15670. The interest-in-sinking tax rate is 8 cents lower. However, the ballot language, the last sentence, you can see there. And then, basically, it's our lowest tax rate in 30 years. And then, y'all already know all these dates, and y'all have a lot of important things on here too, but I just went through that really fast, but I want to be jealous of your time, and that's all of my presentation. So, thank y'all.
Very good.
Yes. And you can tell me to skedaddle, or I don't know if you have questions, or you're like, don't, we don't have time for that, but I'm available to do whatever.
Y'all have any questions or comments? If not, thank you so much.
No, thank you, guys.
We see the growth.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
The city council will now recess into executive session in accordance with Texas Governmental Code Section 551071 to consult with and seek the advice of the city's legal counsel, the Texas Government Code 551072 to discuss the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, and Texas Government Code Section 551074 to discuss personnel matters. Now, the city council is recessing at 12:49 PM. Thank you all for being here. The city council will now reconvene in open session at 1:32 PM, and will now move on to the ceremonial items. And I now call on Pastor Daniel A. Hinton with Christ Lutheran Church to lead us in our invocation, followed by Councilman David Gleschin, a veteran, who will lead us in the U.S. and Texas Pledge of Allegiance. Will you please stand?
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Almighty and merciful Father of our Lord Jesus Christ, we give you thanks and praise for all of your mighty works. You have made all things, you have made us and given us our bodies and souls, our senses and faculties, and have laid out before each of us the life we are to live. You are loving, good, and gracious. Thank you for creating us and for sustaining us with daily bread. Thank you for setting us into homes, into families, and into towns and cities. We thank you for this, our blessed city of Lubbock. Thank you for the many blessings you have showered down upon Texas and upon this, our city. Thank you for our elected officials, the businesses, the churches, the families, and the individuals that make our city the great place that it is. We thank you for the faith of so many of our neighbors here in Lubbock, your blessing which is manifest all around us. In not many cities of this size in our country can we hear the people we meet say, "Have a blessed day," and yet, by your grace, we have that very blessing here. But Lord, we acknowledge that we do not deserve these good gifts. We are not worthy of your favor, for we have sinned against you in thought, word, and deed. We do things that we should not do, and we don't do the things that we should do. We have not loved you with our whole heart, and we have not loved our neighbors as ourselves. As a result, the works of the flesh are within us and all around us. Idolatry, sorcery, enmity, strife, jealousy, fits of anger, rivalries, dissensions, divisions, envy, drunkenness, bochania, and things like these. We appeal to the Lamb of God, Jesus Christ, who died for our sins. Forgive us and give us hearts of obedience to your holy scriptures, manifest in us and in this city the fruit of your Spirit, love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, goodness, faithfulness, gentleness, and self-control. We thank you that Jesus rose from the dead and now reigns as King over heaven and earth. Grant that our city would be known as a righteous city, a city that confesses Jesus as Lord, a city of peace and hope, a city with happy homes, a city that cares for the needy, a city that defends the innocent from evil doers. Make this city a fitting heritage for our children, our posterity. Lord, thank you for civil government. Those who bear the sword do so as your ministers, to be a terror to those who do evil. We pray that our civil servants would acknowledge this calling and perform it faithfully. Be with our judges, attorneys, and law enforcement. Grant them the wisdom and courage to be faithful to their vows of office. Grant that they would never neglect or abuse their authority, but they would stand firm for truth and justice. Keep them safe from harm as they serve us. We pray for this city council meeting this afternoon. Give the councilmen wisdom and guidance as they deliberate on the items before them. May every decision be righteous in your sight, for our benefit and for your glory. In the name of Jesus, amen.
We will now call to order the city council meeting and take up, actually, there are no citizen comments today. And according to Lubbock City Council rules, any citizen wishing to appear in person before a regular meeting of the city council, just so you know, regarding any matter posted on the city council agenda, shall complete the sign-up form provided at the meeting no later than 1:30 PM on October 8th, 2024. Please remember to give us your name, and as I mentioned, there are none, so we're gonna go ahead and move on. At this time, I call the meeting to order, and will now take up Agenda Item 5.1, the minutes for the special city council meeting of August the 3rd, 30th, that is, and the regular city council meeting of September the 10th. Is there a motion to accept Item 5.1? Motion by Councilman Collins, second by Councilman Rose. All in favor? All opposed, same sign? The motion carries. We'll now take up Item 6, the consent agenda. Items 6.1 and 6.5 have been pulled from the consent agenda, and now I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of Items 6.1 and 6.5. Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Gleschin, seconded by Councilwoman Dr. Wilson. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, the same sign? Okay, motion carries. And at this time, we're gonna take up a motion to postpone Item 6.5 until the November the 12th meeting. Can I get a motion for that? Motion by Dr. Wilson, second by Councilman Collins. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign? And we'll now move on to consent.
Madam Mayor, if I might, would suggest, Item 6.1 is only pulled in order to have a recusal by a member of the council. Would suggest that you hold that item and pick it back up along with Item 7.13 at the end of the meeting today.
Okay. So, we will move Item 6.1 at, to the end of the agenda. With that, can I go ahead and get a motion to take on or to accept Item 6.2 through?
Mayor Protim, y'all have already approved the rest of the consent agenda, so you can move to item, Agenda Item 7, the regular agenda, and start there.
Sorry, y'all, I don't do this every day, but, thank you. We're gonna take up regular agenda items 7.1 through 7.7 related to finance, so I'm gonna call on the city manager, Jared Atkinson, to provide an overview of those items and introduce our financial advisor, who will provide the briefings on these agenda items.
Thank you, Mayor. Be glad to do that, and as I'm going through these items briefly, we'll ask Matt Bowles to come up. We also have Ms. Cheryl Brock, our interim CFO, available. Counsel, the sequence of items that are 7.1 through 7.7 is really a group of, other than the two refundings, these are the items that set you in place to implement the budget that was just recently adopted. 7.1 and 7.2 are refunding opportunities, so in our public finance word, refunding is refinancing. This is an opportunity. You have council policies, we have a debt policy that says when we will look at refundings and what we will do. In short version of that, we will achieve at minimum a 2% net present value savings. We target higher than that, but that is our minimum. And I think more importantly, and for those that are listening, when we do a refunding or a refinancing, we do not extend the term of the debt. So, most of these today are from 2014 or 2015. They basically have 10 years left. We will only do the refunding if we both save the minimum of the 2% savings, and we will not extend the term. So, if they had 10 years left, they will have 10 years when they go forward. That will do those two. 7.3 is called a defeasance, or it's a payoff. Airport is in a position to pay off some debt, and you will see that on 7.3, 7.4. You have your new items coming up on 5 and 6, as well as 7, which is for LPNL, to be able to redeem some of theirs. And when we get to 7.7, we will also ask Mr. Harvey Hall, their chief financial officer, to come up. With that, I have rambled on a bit, so we will let Mr. Bowles take us through the wonderful mathematics.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson, Mayor Protim, members of the council. It's nice to be in front of you today, and we have a laundry list of things to go through here, and we've arranged our presentation in the same order that the agendas are arranged, so I'll take these one by one. Before I do that, I want to introduce Julie McMillan, my colleague from RBC, who's with me today, and Jerry Kyle, your bond counsel from Ora Carrington and Sutcliffe, both of whom are available to answer questions if need be. The first item that Mr. Atkinson went through, and I believe, by the way, Mr. Kyle would like us to have the council vote on these as we go through them, so we'll do this one at a time. So, I believe this is 7.1. The first is the general obligation refunding bond, Series 2024. You should have that in front of you, and it's cast on the screen for those watching remotely. This is a refinancing, as Mr. Atkinson said, of a variety of the city's outstanding general obligation bond issues, notably Series 2014. And then you've got three series from the year 2015 that all combined equate to $47,630,000. We estimate the savings at this point in time to be, on a gross basis, just over $2 million, and on a net present value basis, $1.8 million, averaging about $135,000 a year. And this is just essentially, this is as simple as trading high coupon debt for low coupon debt, just like you would refinance your home mortgage. It's that simple. This would be effectuated here in November with a closing in December and would be wrapped up so that you all can have this set as you go into the new calendar year 2025.
Okay.
That is Item 7.1.
I'll now entertain a motion to approve Item 7.1. Motion by Councilman Collins. Second by Councilman Rose. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, the motion carries, and we'll now move to 7.2.
Thank you. Item 7.2 concerns water and wastewater system revenue refunding bond, Series 2024. Same initiative, same concept as on 7.1. This, however, is with respect to obligations issued through your water and wastewater lien. This includes moving some existing general obligation bonds that were initially issued for capex in your water and wastewater system to be moved to that lien, as we have been doing consistently now for several years. This equates to $60,615,000. The projected savings on a gross basis are just over $3.3 million, on a net present value basis, just over $2.9 million, so that they average about $222,000 a year in debt service savings.
I'll now entertain a motion to approve. I'll now entertain a motion to approve Item 7.2. Motion by Dr. Wilson. Second by, I almost said Dr. Gleschin, I guess it is a doctorate. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign.
Great, thank you. We'll now move on to Item 7.3. This involves a partial defeesence of airport obligations. This goes back to the city's GEO refunding bonds, Series 2019, that refinanced projects done in 2011 and '12 at the airport. This involves prepayment of $515,000 in remaining principal value for assets that are no longer in service. This would equate to roughly a $17,000 savings to the airport and thus the city.
I'll now entertain a motion to approve Item 7.3. Motion by Councilman Rose. Second by Dr. Wilson. All those in favor, say aye. Motion carries.
Okay, with respect to Item 7.4, this is a partial redemption of GEO refunding bonds from Series 2015, which is a partial redemption of obligations previously issued for the benefit of the airport through the city's general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2015. This would equate to essentially a $4,000 savings to the city.
I'll now entertain a motion to approve Item 7.4. Motion by Councilman Rose. Was it Collins? Man, okay, you sounded like Rose. And second by Councilman Rose. Motion by Collins, second by Rose. All those in favor, say aye. Motion approved.
Superb. The next item is a summary of a reimbursement resolution in front of you for your consideration. This is Item 7.5. We have a fair amount of language wrapped around this, so I want to go through this very quickly here. This is all about your capital planning effort going forward and your ability to reimburse yourself from a combination of your pay-go financing and your debt offerings with respect to a variety of different projects in the city. As you know, the city passed a 2022 bond election in the amount of $200 million, and that is systematically being rolled out annually through the spring of 2025. In addition to that, you all will undertake annual water and wastewater system projects in roughly the amount of $61 million. In addition to that, $16.2 million in projects for the airport, cemetery, and fleet projects. Each of those is listed in the chart below, and this reimbursement resolution will allow you to start work on these projects and reimburse yourself from the future issuances that I just outlined.
Okay, I will now entertain a motion to approve Item 7.5. Motion by Dr. Wilson. Second by Mr. Gleschin. You want to be called, look, he wants to be called doctor. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Okay, and finally, Item 7.6 concerns the issuance of water and wastewater system revenue bonds, Series 2025, for six water and wastewater system projects, including the land acquisition and design of Lake Seven. These will be 20-year obligations with a 10-year optional par call. They will be issued with ratings of AA by both Fitch and S&amp;P. We have included a little cushion in our interest rate estimate since we have some time between now and transaction, which will happen after the first of the year. The preliminary, and again, we've got some interest rate cushion in here, the preliminary summary of statistics say that the all-in TIC is just over 4%, 4.09%. So we would be under that 4% taking the cushion out. And you can see the debt service associated with the issuance of these projects on the right-hand side of the page.
Okay, I will now entertain a motion to approve Item 7.6. Motion by Councilman Collins, seconded by Councilman Rose. All those in favor, say aye. Motion carries.
And then finally, Item 7.7, and I'm going to ask or receive the dais to Harvey Hall.
Thank you, counsel. Wanted to announce that, as I begin this, is our part of our financial resiliency is one of our three key strategic plans for LPNL. We've made a lot of progress on that. Last week, we received our third observation from Fitch Ratings, and we were upgraded from A+ to AA-. So that makes the third review of LPNL by rating agencies. All three have resulted in rating upgrades. And that's a testimony to when we made the transition, per city council's desire, to move into retail competition, the reduction in risk to the district, getting out of purchase power costs and being pretty much a transmission distribution utility with stable earnings has earned us that mark. So we're well on our way and actually ahead of where we thought we would be during this time. But also, part of that strategy is debt reduction, and that we do that where it's cost-effective and we have funds available to do so. So we have looked at, we worked with our financial advisors and looked at what bonds we have eligible in a 10-year callable period. We have two right now, one's 2014, the other one's 2015. We've selected the one with the highest coupon rate, which is 5% for 2015. So we've skipped over 14 because it's more cost-effective for us to do so. And that would result in a just $2,670,000 interest savings over the next 10 years. And it also, when you do that, it also improves our cash flow, so we don't have to carry that debt service of $900,000 a year for the next 10 years. It frees up future cash flows. It also continues to improve our financial metrics from debt to asset, to our debt coverage ratio, continues to put us in even even stronger position going forward, and continues to get us to where we want to be with financial resiliency. So all these come together with more borrowing capacity if ever needed in the future, lower cost borrowing if we ever needed to do it in the future, but we have no intention over the next five to seven years to do any borrowing during this time. We're able to sufficiently cover our costs. So with that in mind, we want to offer before the board, before the, can I probably say the board? Because I'm used to the electric utility board. To the city council, the idea of redeeming our 2015 revenue bonds. So that's what's before the council right now. Any questions? I'll stop for any questions.
No. I'm sorry, I forgot to do this little thing. Okay, Tim?
Just a quick question, Harvey. When we see a bond have a call date, that's the time when we can pay this bond off without any penalty, is that correct?
That's exactly right. Most of these, all these bonds carry a standard 10-year callable period. So this is a 2015 bond, so when we go to repay this in April of 2025, it's reached its 10-year callable period. But exactly right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, I think some folks are gonna make their flight this time. I think y'all recall. At this time, I'm gonna go ahead and entertain a motion to approve Item 7.7. Motion by Councilman Gleschin, second by Dr. Wilson. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. And we'll now take up Item 7.8, and that's to consider board appointments to several city boards and committees. And it's my understanding that we'll be considering appointments to all of the listed boards except for the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I will call on City Secretary Courtney Paz to provide the staff briefing at this time.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I can read down the list if you'd like, and then you all could make a motion, and I will just skip over Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay.
For the Airport Board, the recommendation is to reappoint Eddie Harris. The, to replace Howard Thrash, Trey Miller. The recommendation for David Zweiger is to be replaced by Dina Jeffries. Animal Services Advisory Board, Deborah Deary, to be replaced by Kami York. Capital Improvements Advisory Committee, Allison Blaylock, to be replaced by Victor Flores Modul. Health Educational Facilities Development Corporation, John Mammon and Marlese Boils, to be reappointed. Key Lubbock Beautiful Advisory Committee, Sonia Garcia, to be replaced by Johnny Azarzua. Lubbock Economic Development Alliance Inc. Board of Directors, Walter, Kathy, Stephen Brett Kate, and Chris Carpenter, to be replaced by Robert Taylor, Jordan Wheatley, and Mont McLendon. Lubbock Emergency Communication District's Board of Managers, the reappointment of Chief Nathan White. Market Lubbock Inc. Board of Directors, Walter Kathy, Stephen Brett Kate, and Chris Carpenter, to be replaced by Robert Taylor, Jordan Wheatley, and Mont McLendon. Model Codes and Construction Advisory Board, Marvin White, in your Texas License HVAC position, to be reappointed. Robbie Moon, in the West Texas Home Builders Association position, to be replaced by Craig Ray. Alana Watts, in your engineer position, to be replaced by Brian Robertson. Robert Bichard, in the facilities manager position, to be replaced by Logan West. Veterans Advisory Committee, Jeremy Sedeno, to be replaced by Dr. John Martinez. And the Zoning Board of Adjustment, Christopher Koch, who serves in an alternate position, to be replaced by Tracy Thomason. And I'll stop there as the next board on here is the next agenda item.
Okay. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointments to the listed boards and committees, with the exception of the Planning and Zoning Commission, as provided by the city secretary, that is. Can I get, motion by Dr. Wilson. Second by Councilman Rose. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. At this time, we are going to take up Item 7.9 to consider board appointments to the Electric Utility Board, and I will call on City Secretary Courtney Paz to provide the staff briefing on this item as well.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. For the Electric Utility Board, we have the recommendation to reappoint Dr. Craig Ryan, Gwen Stafford, Dr. Gonzalo Ramirez, and to replace Dan Odom, Rea Hill.
Awesome. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointments to the Electric Utility Board. Motion by Councilman Collins. Second by Dr. Wilson. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. And at this time, we will now move, or we'll take up Item 710, and we'll call on the city's Planning Department to provide the staff briefing on this item. Thank you for being here.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. These are proposed amendments to the Unified Development Code specifically regarding our landscape requirements. I'm happy to go through any of them you'd like for me to. We do have one proposed revision from Councilman Rose. This is in regards to Item Number 23. The language that was presented at the joint hearing was to allow synthetic turf. His proposal is to amend that language to state synthetic turf is allowed when the total area covered does not exceed more than half of the minimum landscape surface ratio or percentage of the site. I'd be pleased to answer any questions or go through any of the amendments you'd like for me to.
Okay. Are there any questions? I think at this time, we're gonna go ahead and, should we poll?
I think what we need to do, Mayor Pro Tem, is go ahead and make a motion and a second on all the amendments. And then if Councilman Rose would like to make an amendment, at that point in time, he can do it during the discussion.
Okay, so I now entertain a motion to approve Item 7.10. Motion by Dr. Wilson. Second by Kevin, David Gleschin. All those in favor, say aye. Wait.
Whoa, 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 whoa. No, 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 we're not taking a vote. Take up the discussion, and during the discussion of the motion, you're moving very fast, Mayor Pro Tem, which is great, but...
Well, I got thrown off because I called him his dad's name.
There you go.
Sorry about that.
Okay, so I think there's some discussion, and I think that Councilmember Rose might have a proposed motion.
Councilman Rose.
Does David want to speak first? Mayor, I move to amend the motion by replacing the proposed Amendment 23, which is Section 39.03.01.D.6, with a new Amendment Number 23 as set forth in the handout I have distributed to you. And Ms. Sager already went over it a little bit, but just, I think the current language right now is allowing or not permitting synthetic turf is prohibited except in limited applications deemed acceptable by a director of planning. And then we had a proposed amendment that would just allow it. And I'm proposing an amendment to the amendment that the turf is not more than 50% of the landscape surface area. So you're not just throwing down, you know, 100% of turf. So, yeah, David?
Okay. A motion has been made by Councilmember Rose, seconded by Councilmember Gleschin. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And now we take on the next, the Item 7.10.
The main motion.
The main motion. Can I get a motion for, motion by Dr. Wilson?
Already have a motion.
You already have a motion. You can just take up either more discussion or take a vote on it now.
Is there any additional discussion? At this time, let's go ahead and vote on that. Can I, well... Tim, I don't even remember who it was, but, okay. All in favor. All opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. That was fun, thank you. And now, at this time, we're gonna take Item 711, and I now call on our city manager to provide the staff briefings on this item.
Thank you, mayor and council member. I apologize, got off track there. Item 711, this is kind of the last step that we have that's related to City of Lubbock Utilities and the transition of all the electricities or electric customers to ERCOT. So think back for probably most, if not all of us in the room, when you took new service, your deposit was paid against your electric bill. There is no longer an electric bill that comes from any component of the City of Lubbock. Thus, we don't have a way to assess a deposit for new water, wastewater, and related services. This item would put that back in place for our ability to do so. Same basic scenario as was done before, where certain ones can be exempt, refunded after time, all of that. It's just we need a way to apply it to water.
Okay. If there's no discussion, I will now entertain a motion to approve Item 711. Motion by Dr. Wilson. Second by Rose. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. And at this time, we'll take Item 712, again, by our assistant, by our city manager. See, I keep demoting everybody. By our city manager. Doctors, assistants, it all works. I'll leave it to Jared to fix it.
It all works, Mayor Pro Tem. Item 712, this is the second reading of the ordinance that implements the sewer lateral program that we worked on through budget, and ultimately, you took your first read at your prior meeting. Counsel, no changes between the two readings. In the most simple form of this, the private portion of the sewer lateral that meets the need to be replaced, the charge is $1,000 to do so. Owner occupied, you have the ability to pay that out in not more than 12 payments back up to the city. You can pay it upfront. As well, counsel, this does establish the assistance program for those that are owner occupied and meet the criteria for that extra help. Myself, or Eric, or Mr. Turpin, be glad to take any questions you may have.
If there are no questions, I will now entertain a motion to approve Item 7.12. Motion by Councilman Collins. Second by Dr. Wilson. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. At this time, I'm gonna ask, oh, you, okay, let me count. One, two, three, four, all in favor, four, and one against. And that is Councilman Gleschin. At this time, on that note, I'm gonna ask Councilman Gleschin to recuse him... At this time, on that note, I'm going to ask Councilman Glashine to recuse himself from item 6.713. And we'll now take those items up and I'll call on the city attorney, Matt Wade, to provide the staff briefing on this item.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. This is a compromise and settlement agreement regarding a lawsuit that was filed against the City of Lubbock. The lawsuit is styled Princess Reyes versus the City of Lubbock. It involves a traffic accident that occurred in 2021. Liability is not an issue. It was a damages type case. It did go to a mediation and there was a proposed settlement. And that proposed settlement is for $90,000. That will be a complete settlement of the entire lawsuit and it's our recommendation that the council approve that settlement.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Collins. Second by Councilman Rose. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And it passes with four. The city council will now conduct the public hearing on regarding a petition to create a tax increment reinvestment zone for the North Park Development Area. And as a reminder, the purpose of the public hearing is to hear from members of the public regarding this agenda item, including hearing from interested persons who would like to speak and present evidence for or against the financing. Now, while the council may ask questions during the public hearing, the council will not discuss the merits of this agenda item during the public hearings. And I now will open the public hearing for agenda item 7.13 at 2:07 PM and I will call on our Brianna Brown to provide the staff briefings.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Counsel, nice to be with you this afternoon. As the council will recall, you all received the petition for the creation of a new proposed tax increment financing district and called the public hearing for this meeting at your last council meeting. So you will see a little bit of repeat information. Mostly that is for the public that may be here to speak in favor and opposition to this proposed district. We really won't get into the specifics of the development today, really just the location and talk a little bit about tax increment financing. So just as a reminder, you have a map of the district here. This is located outside of the North Loop, near the Alamo Drafthouse area. It's approximately 332 acres. Today, the only action that we will be doing is calling a public, or having the public hearing. We will consider the first reading of an, of the creation ordinance we're hoping for at the second meeting in October. And then we would finalize the creation process at the first meeting in November. The benefits of this specific TIF district to the city are promotion of development and redevelopment of an area that would otherwise not occur in the reasonably foreseeable future. That is something that's stated as part of state law as criteria to make a district eligible for tax increment financing. This particular development will, the benefit to the city is that there will be some financing of public improvements in the area, specifically in Playa Lake Park. And then at the bottom of this slide, you've got some legal jargon that basically says that in order for a petition TIF, which is what this is, to be, or for a district to be eligible, you have to receive a petition from at least 50% of the appraised value ownership in the district. We do unfortunately have one primary owner that owns the majority of this area and so the petition that you received more than meets the requirements of the statute. This slide shows some estimated project costs. Do you just want to note that these are estimates at this time? In the top area, you see estimates for the development of a Playa Lake Park at $3.6 million. That is the developer's investment in this district. He does plan to develop a Playa Lake into a pedestrian-friendly park. The TIF would serve then to reimburse the developer for the cost of development. The two parks that you see at the bottom, this is actually a reason I call out estimated. We've since removed Frankfurt out of the boundary of the TIF, so there will not be developments in the Frankfurt Park. But Lopez Park, which is a City of Lubbock Park, is included in this area. And should the board, the council and the TIF Advisory Board choose to make improvements to that park at a future date, then they would be eligible to use TIF funding to do so. But that is certainly not a guarantee. That would be up to the board at a later time. And then not included on this slide are maintenance costs and that would be something that the TIF would be able to provide funding for as well. On this slide, you'll see the non-project costs. That's kind of an awkward way to say what this is. This is the anticipated development of the entire district. So you can see lots of commercial development, multifamily housing. You've got some medical development in there as well. At about $104.5 million anticipated investment, that is developer cost, not TIF-related costs. And then the project feasibility during the term of the zone, which is proposed to be a 30-year TIF, the area is estimated to generate approximately $41.5 million. You saw this slide at your last meeting. I'm not going to go through it unless you guys would like for me to again, but this is really again for the benefit of the public in the event that someone is here to speak in favor or in opposition of TIF financing as a whole. Again, you have your map of the zone here. These are the items that the public is able to speak about today related to creation of this area. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or if there's anything you want to have up on the slide, on the screen for the public hearing, just let me know.
Any questions? Okay. Is there anyone wishing? I'm sorry, Tim. Go ahead. Sorry about that.
No problem. Just a quick question. When a TIF district is established and you'd put on the screen up to $41 million in new taxable revenues through the period, the 30-year period. It's, it's at the city's discretion, the council's discretion, to determine how much of that can be utilized for improvements to the location. And, and so what I'm, I guess what I'm getting at is we've got about three or $7 million worth of expenses we're wanting to cover with the TIF. The balance goes, still comes to the city in the form of a property tax. Is that correct? That is correct. Ultimately, when the project financing plan is complete and presented back to the council, it will include both the total length of the TIF. It is up to the 30, doesn't have to be the entirety, as well as how much of that incremental revenue will stay within the TIF for the selected projects versus coming back to the city.
And that's a good point. The language inside the project and finance plan does include that, the earlier of reimbursement of the proj, or the reimbursement of the project costs or the 30 years. And so should a future Board of Advisors or the council determine that once the reimbursement is paid, we don't need the district anymore, then we could certainly end it before that 30-year period.
But also with council and, and the board's approval, additional projects can be added? Yes or no? Yes. Yes. Eligible projects that meet the statute and are within the zone could be added, subject to the board and the council both.
And the project and finance plan, which can be amended over time. If, so let's say we left something out and a new project came up in 10 years, it meets the requirements of the statute but isn't in the project and finance plan. As long as it's eligible by state law, we can revise that plan to pull something new in if we decided we wanted to.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing there are none, if, there is anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the creation of this tax increment reinvestment zone? You can go ahead and come up. Please give us your name and address when you come forward to speak. Okay? Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the creation of this tax increment reinvestment zone? Please make sure to give us your name and address when you come forward to speak.
Good afternoon. Corey Dooley, AMD Engineering, 6515 68th Street. I'm, I'm on the design team for this project and represent the owners. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Most of them I'll probably just redirect to Brianna, but I'll do the best I can.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Are there any other folks that would like to speak in favor?
My name is Ty Kreidler and I'm a professional historian and I work at Texas Tech at the Southwest Collection. I'm also the Executive Director for the West Texas Historical Association. And I am a doctor, but you can call me Ty. I live at 3008 26th Street, Lubbock, Texas. And in my capacity as a historian, I worked for about, well, maybe 14 years now documenting the traces of the Comanche and the Quanah Parker Trail. And how this applies to this particular zone is that I know what's planned for it is the installation of a very exceptional piece of statuary, perhaps one of the few that depict Native Americans upon horseback, an enabled individual that was part of the landscape. And so it's very exciting that we see a park project, perhaps in the offing here, that might be a capstone to what has been going on in this region, in the West Texas region, of which Lubbock is a part, a centerpiece, if you will, for the Quanah Parker Trail. As you know, you've driven around, you've seen these 24-foot arrows planted around the landscape. Some of you have stopped and some of you don't know what's going on with those. But nonetheless, the company in granite markers tell you that either the Comanche were there or Quanah was there. So I come to you today to request that the city council please think seriously about supporting this particular TIF. It's, the project will of course pave the way for this creation funded by local citizen and activist and attorney Kevin Glashine. And of course, it's in honor of Quanah Parker, who lived in this region, who tracked the trails here, was involved in areas in and around the Yellow House Drawl where this city of Lubbock is situated. Eddie Dixon has been working on this project, also a Lubbock resident, to complete this historic sculpture. And it will finally recognize the famed Quahada Comanche, Quanah Parker, and the strong connection that it has to West Texas. I know this is a history lesson that's probably of a surprise and I hope you bear with me. Quanah, as many of you know and you've read, you know, some of the new books out about him, was a very interesting individual. There's a lot of myth and magic made up about him, but what is true about him is that he was a West Texan. And in the finest tradition, he stood at my height and he was my build. He was six foot two and a half and he was very muscular. He was a Comanche warrior, a tactician and war chief. As many of you know, his father was a Comanche Pata Nakona, his mother, the famous Cynthia Ann Parker. Quanah, as he became an adult, refused to sign the federal government's Medicine Lodge Treaty of 1867 that would relegate him and others to the reservation life. Instead, he and his Quahada declined to participate in the government program and moved to live free in the far recesses of West Texas. Sounds like why I came to Lubbock. In response, the federal government sent its best field commander, its very best commander, Ranald McKenzie. And it's interesting that we have a park named in his honor. Be nice if we could name this park, Quanah Parker Park too, wouldn't it? But that's beyond my pay grade. In 1871, the very best field commander of the United States Army fought Quanah to a standstill at the Battle of the Freshwater Fork of the Brazos. And Quanah put McKenzie and his troopers afoot, running off their horses, including McKenzie's prized gray pacer. In 1874, Quanah again outsmarted McKenzie 150 years ago, the end of September, by avoiding the surprise entrapment at the famed Battle of the Paladura Canyon. However, Quanah could see the end times coming and accepted surrender orders from his old adversary McKenzie, thus avoiding annihilation for himself and his people. He emerged as the pivotal leader through which the Comanche people moved into a new way of life, living in the faraway land of Oklahoma. In his new life, he became a well-known stockman, diplomat, politician, educator and religious leader. But Quanah never forgot his roots. He visited Texas and West Texas specifically frequently, his homeland. He considered West Texas to be his home. And sometime before he died in 1911, he confided to an interviewer, "I am a Texan." Please vote and vote positively on this project. Let's bring Quanah Parker, his statue, home finally. Thank you.
Thank you. That was a great lesson.
My name is Holly Humphries and thank you for hearing me out today. I live at 3008 26th Street in Lubbock. And I am here to express support for agenda item 7.13, to consider the creation of a tax increment reinvestment zone for the North Park Development Area to stimulate economic development and revitalization. I offer this support not only as a citizen of this community, but also as an adopted member of the Comanche family, the Parker family line that descended from Baldwin Parker. There is a vision plan that has been harbored for many years by Mr. Kevin Glashine for this area. It is to create within it a park that would honor Quanah Parker. And to place within it a sculpture of Quanah Parker mounted as a warrior on a horse, sculpted by Lubbock artist Eddie Dixon, famous for his equestrian monument honoring the Buffalo Soldiers. And that is mounted up at Leavenworth, Kansas. Now, I'm going to digress from my notes here because what would make this such a signatory, amazing, prominent point in Lubbock's area is one of the best public lectures I ever attended in my life was at the University of Texas at Austin in 1998, when Mexican-American sculptor Luis Jimenez was there to accept the Most Distinguished Alumni's Award. And he spoke about how he had put a vaquero on a blue bucking horse with the two guns raised in the air and there was so much protest because nobody wanted to see a Hispanic man mounted on a symbolic, powerful horse. Well, not everyone agreed with that assessment. And today, that's, one addition of that sculpture stands in front of the Smithsonian American Art Museum in Washington DC. Another one is down in Houston. Another one stands, a smaller version elsewhere. But Eddie Dixon has this vision, thanks to Kevin Glashine's support, of placing Quanah Parker on a horse. I am a scholar of the fine arts out of Texas Tech. I did a complete scholarly survey of all the monuments to Native Americans in the United States. Most do not have Indians on a horse. Very few do. A, because of the cost, B, because of perhaps the symbolic nature of putting a warrior on a horse. The only three sculptures of Quanah near to us in our region are a bust of him in the Paladura Canyon Amphitheater. I think I mentioned that in my email note to y'all yesterday. There is a fabulous sculpture of him that was recently dedicated and mounted in Skory County, Texas, on the Western College campus. And then there is a sculpture of Quanah in Fort Worth, but that one I, I think could use some improvement. I have seen the prototype of Eddie Dixon's sculpture that he intends, with your blessing, to put in this area under consideration. It would place Lubbock, Texas on a national map. And with that, I wanted to say that for the past 13 years, within the 52-county region of the Texas Historical Commission's Texas Plains Trail Region, which is a cultural heritage trail that helps bring attention to our communities, to help with economic development by attracting travelers, Lubbock is a part of the Texas Plains Trail Region. And I passed out, I think, a rat card that shows on the back some of the elements of the Quanah Parker Trail that a group of citizens, historians, scholars, county judges, civic leaders of all kinds have joined together to create. Lubbock is on that trail. The National Ranching Heritage Center here in Lubbock has the finest collection of Comanche artifacts and regalia outside of the Smithsonian Institution and perhaps outside of the Comanche Nation itself. So we do have a very important place in, in this history. But all have joined together to create this conceptual trail because this was the territorial range of the Comanche. We are sitting in it right now. So I am supporting this entire development area of this So I am supporting this entire development area, of this area, because if we do have a park, perhaps it could be named in Quanah's honor, which would provide a bookend to Mackenzie. Quanah and Mackenzie were adversaries in the run-up to the Red River Wars End in 1875, but Mackenzie subsequently became Quanah's staunchest advocate, helping him look for his mother, providing him with durum bulls to help start a cattle herd on the reservation. So there is nothing but honor that could be associated with Lubbock taking a part of, in turn, placing honor in this area, in this region of our city, and therefore honoring a Native American in, in many, many ways. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the creation of this tax increment? Okay. Seeing there's no one else desiring to speak on this item, I'm now going to close the public hearing. And that's it. Having exhausted all items on the agenda, this meeting is now adjourned.